Good afternoon. Today is Tuesday, June sixth, two thousand twenty-three. It is four thirty P M. And this is the New Ulm City Council meeting. President Becker is on vacation today, so I'm gonna try and muddle through this. We have quite a few items, robust with some policies and some changes, so let's get going. We, first of all, have the consent agenda items. Counselors?
So move.
Second.
Motion to second. I just wanted to pull out a real briefing. We have both Cheryl Corman, who is our acting Park and Rec Director, and Ryan Wire, our Facility Supervisor, who submitted articles to two different magazines and really well-written and very thorough. And so, thank you for doing that. I appreciate that. We need to get our name on the map. We do a lot of good things. So I encourage all our department heads when there's opportunity to follow through with that. So, so anyway, we have a motion to second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number two point one, license and permits. First one's Bavarian Blast. Anybody want to tackle that one?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary on-sale and tax-dedicating liquor license for the Bavarian Blast to sell alcohol during their event at the Brown County Fairgrounds for the period beginning Thursday, July twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, through Sunday, July twenty-third, twenty-three, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item two point two, general license renewals. So this is for tobacco, fireworks, the kennel, for sheep. Do we still have sheep in town?
Uh huh. There's one.
We still have the one out at, okay, solid waste hauling and tree service.
Motion to approve the issuance of the following renewals of general licenses for the period beginning July first, two thousand twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements. Again, tobacco, fireworks, retail sellers, kennel, sheep, solid waste haulers, and tree service.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number three, reports from officers, boards, and commissions. This is the first zoning request. And we're gonna... All yours. All right.
Good evening, Council President, councilors. John Isley, planner at the City of New Ulm. So the proposed action here is to conduct the first consideration of ordinance number twenty-two-three-zero-seven-one, amending Appendix A of the New Ulm City Code, zoning ordinance of the City of New Ulm, setback requirements in the I-two General Industrial Zoning District, and specific standards applicable to auto-oriented businesses. The Planning Commission, at its May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, unanimously recommended approval of the ordinance amendment. I would like to note that at that meeting, there were a number of auto-oriented business present at the meeting. We were able to interact and answer their questions at that meeting. As far as the overview, we do have the staff report to the Planning Commission. So you'll see, actually, it looks like there's two copies of the ordinance here, but we always include the full ordinance proposal in the staff report to the Planning Commission. That's why it looks like there's two full copies here. So primary issues and alternatives to consider. So the amended sections of the zoning ordinance would include amending Section six point three, which establishes a second set of development standards in the I-two General Industrial Zoning District, Section nine point two, which revises standards for commercial uses, auto repair, minor, and vehicle sales and rental, and then number two, industrial uses, auto repair, major machinery and truck repair, and sales, and truck or freight terminals, amending Section twelve point six, which adds abatement and enforcement authority from Chapter eight of the City Code, and then Section thirteen point three, which adds a new definition for vehicle inoperable or junk vehicles. The City Council and staff have spent a good amount of time reviewing the city's standards and policies addressing blight. The discussion has been taking place since January twenty eighteen, and following the establishment of the Blight Committee. More recently, staff were prepared for the City Council's consideration, some amendments to the zoning ordinance, in an attempt to more clearly define the standards and strategies that would apply to certain specified properties. So, little description of these proposed amendments. Section six point three establishes a second set of I-two standards for the General Industrial Zoning District. After reviewing the I-two standards that were adopted when we passed the update to the zoning ordinance in April two thousand twenty-two, we found that those standards were more applicable to larger industrial lots. And because we have a number of smaller I-two industrial lots in the community, those setback standards made those lots really restrictive and almost unusable to some degree. So we decided to propose relaxing those for the smaller lots, to relax those setback standards for those smaller lots. Section nine point two would revise the standards, again, for commercial uses, auto repair, minor, and vehicle sales or rental, industrial uses, auto repair, major machinery, truck repair, and sales, sorry, truck repair and sales, and truck or freight terminal. So following a recent review of existing businesses in New Ulm that would be subject to these development standards in the new zoning ordinance, it was determined that a small number of them actually met the desired standards. So it was decided to revise the standards where appropriate to establish different standards for existing businesses that would acknowledge their current operating procedures. Development standards were adjusted for each of the previously identified land uses. Many of the new standards were the same for the existing businesses and for the new businesses. One requirement for all businesses that is needed is a site plan. Section twelve point six would adjust remedies and penalties in order to make all enforcement tools available to the Community Development Department. It would also state that a violation of a provision of the zoning ordinance or a condition imposed under the authority of this ordinance would be a public nuisance, except if it were involved, except if it involved the removal or relocation of a principal or accessory structure or part of it. The public nuisance may be abated. And then lastly, Section thirteen point three would add the definition for the term inoperable or junk vehicles. It was felt that this may clarify and assist when taking enforcement actions. Staff has notified as many auto-oriented businesses in the community that we are aware of. We sent out thirty letters to those businesses prior to the Planning Commission having its hearing on this proposed amendment. We did hear back from nine of those auto-oriented businesses prior to the meeting and had active discussion on how this would apply to your business or not apply to your business. And we had everybody from truck and machinery repair to auto, all of the categories that we talked about, including auto sales. At the meeting, we actually handed out the draft ordinance to people that were in attendance. And then following, we actually met with some of those folks at their site to go over what a site plan could look like, and then went through some of the provisions of the proposed amendment. I did want to note, there was one specific amendment, or one specific provision that was asked at the Council Work Session last time, and that was to allow the outside repair of basically large vehicles at truck or machinery sales and repair to allow that use to continue to be outside if it exists. So we added a provision in here that states, basically, if you were in operation and doing outside repairs prior to July one, two thousand twenty-three, you could continue to do that. So... And that would conclude the staff report.
Thank you, John. Comments? Again, this is the first consideration, so this is just the first meet, first process on this. Hi there. Just state your name and address for the record.
Corey Heck. Lives at seven twenty-seven South Front, has a shop at one twenty-one South Alley.
Okay.
I was just curious, so the day that the inoperable vehicle sits there, is that the day that you can make a complaint? Or is that... Because how are you gonna enforce that? Are you gonna have somebody go out and check every single business to make this equal? Or are we gonna do complaint basis? Are we gonna consider complaint basis, like, if it's only coming from one person? Are we gonna, like, just keep that up?
John, you want to answer that one?
Sure.
How are we gonna make this more fair?
Sure. So, and we change, we defined inoperable vehicle, which we didn't have previously. And that definition includes either is a vehicle that has a part missing that makes it inoperable to drive down the road, or it's stored on blocks, or it is unlicensed. Okay? So we would use those three criteria to determine whether or not something is inoperable. Typically, what we do is, well, what we're gonna try to do here in this situation in particular is work with all of these auto-oriented businesses from the very get-go, try to address all those concerns, those types of concerns. Or if they have situations on their site already that are like that, where they have inoperable vehicles, how can we address that? And how do we make sure that that doesn't continue, or it meets the standards here? Specifically, we added provisions in here for existing businesses that they can have up to ten inoperable vehicles on the site at one time before they are considered a junkyard. Once you get beyond that ten, you're gonna be considered a junkyard or a scrapyard, and there's different provisions that apply to you. Existing businesses in particular, they're allowed to have five, even in the, even in the front yard. But the other five have to be in the side or the rear yard. If it's a new business and they're going to be storing inoperable vehicles, they either have to store them all in the rear yard, or it has to be screened. So...
Good question.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I like that you set out notices and met with, a lot of people showed up and answered good questions, it sounds like. So it's not like it was a good meeting. All right. I'd entertain a motion, just that we have had the first reading of this, our first consideration of this ordinance.
I'll offer motion to conduct the first consideration of ordinance number twenty-two-three dash zero-seven-one, amending Appendix A of the City of New Ulm City Code, the zoning ordinance of the City of New Ulm, setback requirements in the I-two General Industrial Zoning District, and specific standards applicable to auto-oriented businesses.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? No? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, we're gonna move on to new, or this will come back, John, in about a month, right?
It'll be in the next meeting.
June twentieth.
June twentieth? Okay.
Sorry.
All right, we're gonna move on to new business stuff. We have sixteen items under new business. This is the time to break out the popcorn, and let's get going. First one's appointment to the Library Board.
Move the appointment of Lynn Hanley to the Library Board to fill the unexpired term of Ting Ting Schwartz.
Second. Motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item four point two, a joint Public Utilities Meeting with City Council to go over financial stuff. Folks?
I just want to point out that this meeting, the P U C has already approved the schedule of this meeting, and it will be at the P U C in the front conference room, instead of in the chamber this year, like it normally is. So it will be preceding the next council meeting.
I'll make a motion to schedule a joint City Council, P U C information meeting on Tuesday, June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, at three thirty in the P U C front entrance room to discuss the audited financial statements for the year ended December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Motion to second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, four point three, adopt Juneteenth as a city holiday. We did ask, did receive a small, minor adjustment to that. City Manager, you want to talk about that real briefly?
Yeah, there was an amendment to today's, to today's agenda, and it was just extra information for the two unions that the city has, and we can make those available if you need a copy of them.
So we're just including the unions? That's what was missing. Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion for adopting the Juneteenth holiday. You don't say anything? You're good, John?
We'll just have a resolution. No, sorry, Shawna Boomgarden, H R Director. We'll just have an official resolution for this at the next meeting to officially add it to the union contracts for two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four. I wasn't able, I didn't think I'd be able to get them signed in time, and I was able to, so just an F Y I. So...
Thank you.
Motion to adopt Juneteenth as a city holiday for two thousand twenty-three calendar year, and in two thousand twenty-four and beyond, in accordance with the state law. The personal policy shall be updated to reflect this change.
Second.
Motion to second. Any other comments, questions? And then, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item four point four, Airport Maintenance and Operation Grants. Joe's been waiting to talk all night.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you, City Councilors. Before you say, it's just a two-year grant contract with the state of Minnesota. The state reimburses us two-thirds of our, or three-quarters of our eligible airport maintenance costs, a maximum not to exceed an amount of fifty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars here coming up on July first. So this contract would just renew that agreement for the next two years.
Well, then we'll hurry it along. Offer the resolution approving MinDOT Office of Aeronautics Grant Contract number one zero five three three zero zero, Airport Maintenance and Operation Grant Contract between the City of New Ulm and the State of Minnesota for the state fiscal years of two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five, commencing July first, two thousand twenty-three, and terminating June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Authorize the City Manager and Finance Director to execute the agreement for and on behalf of the City of New Ulm.
Second.
We have a motion to second for a resolution. Any other comments? Any questions? Nicole, would you please call roll?
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item four point five, two thousand twenty-two Surface Reconstruction Final Assessments.
Mr. Vice Chair, City Councilors, this request is just to adopt the final assessment rolls for the two thousand twenty-two Surface Reconstruction Project and set the date for the public hearing, which is scheduled for Tuesday, July eighteenth, at four thirty P M.
I'll offer a motion to approve the final assessment rolls for the two thousand twenty-two Surface Reconstruction Project, set the public hearing date for Tuesday, July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, four thirty P M.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item four point six, two thousand twenty-three Obligation Fund Bonds. Nicole?
Counselors, this is just an annual item to set the date for the bond sale. And then, just to let you know, we are bonding for two million twenty-five thousand dollars this year to help cover the cost of the street projects.
Okay, I entertain a motion.
I'll offer the resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing the terms and conditions of the sale and set sale of the date of August first, two thousand twenty-three, at ten A M. in the amount of two million twenty-five thousand for general obligation and permanent improvement revolving fund bonds, series two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution.
Resolution.
Resolution. Nicole, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to item four point seven. Oh, this is some of our first consideration of ordinances. So I think our City Managers is gonna give us a brief tidbit, or Nicole? Either one?
Between both of us, yes.
Yeah, this came up with some businesses this year when we were going through annual renewals, and...
Cleanup, it looks like.
Yeah, just, we kind of questioned why we even have this license, and because it was, what it was doing, it was costing businesses fifteen dollars to register, and then fifteen dollars per every device that they had. So that would include washing machines, pool tables, pinball machines, arcade games. Those types of things are what's licensed with this. And the only cost that we incur is the process of licensing. So there's no inspections, there's no follow-up. We couldn't think of any other reason to have this license. So we just thought that we would approach eliminating the license need completely. It does not affect e-pole pads. It doesn't...
How many?
Yeah, you're not pole pads, though.
E-tap?
Pole tabs. Yeah.
How many businesses were, I mean, was it on the honor basis?
Well, there was quite a few. Like, there would be, it was an annual business, or an annual license, like Kegel, Walmart, the Laundromat, you know, all those types of businesses that have just some of those random machines sitting around would have to report them.
Couple dozen, or not even?
I would say, yeah, pinball, pinball, all those, you know, the arcades.
Yeah, maybe thirty-six.
Where's all the saunas?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's in the next ordinance thing.
Sure. I'm fine with it.
Oh, actually, this is the public saunas as well. So this eliminates that license as well, which is a license we haven't used in many, many, many years. From what I could gather, historically, it was used for something at Turner Hall.
Yeah, and that's been gone for about ten years.
So it was just getting rid of something that's there. It still allows for the need for an inspection should a business want to open that kind of operation, but it doesn't require the license to be there listed anymore.
All right, good discussion. So for four point seven, I need to...
Conduct the first consideration of ordinance number twenty-two-three dash X X, amending Chapter four, Section four point two-eight, and Section four point six of the City Code of the City of New Ulm, relative to business regulation and licensing of mechanical amusement devices and public saunas.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next consideration is ordinance number twenty-three, Chapter four, with taxicabs.
Vice Chair, Councilors, this is kind of an update, you know? Again, when we look at taxicabs, we don't have anything in there that does ride share, and they haven't been able to operate in the city. So this is just updating that to allow ride share, you know, your Ubers and Lifts, to operate within the city limits. So they would, again, follow kind of the same path that taxicabs do. It'd be fifty dollar. Each driver would just come in, pay the fifty dollar fee to operate in the city, and they'd be, they'd be good for the year. The only thing we would check on our end would be that they are actually, in fact, licensed by Uber or Lyft to get, to get that license. So they would go through that process first and then show that to the city, because that includes the vehicle inspection, insurance, and all of that. Uber and Lyft check that, so...
So is Uber and Lyft, will they say, in New Ulm, here's who are your carriers?
Yeah, if you open the app, it'll, they'll all be there.
It'll give you the name and the piece. Awesome. Because we really want to make sure these folks have an insurance, and they're driving legally, and...
And that's what Uber and Lyft does. You can't, they do the vehicle inspection. You have to upload that up to Uber and Lyft, the insurance. They make sure the vehicles, I think, are no older than ten years. So again, Uber and Lyft verifies that information.
You know how many we have now?
Zero.
Zero. We had one.
A long time ago, yes.
And he was, he was an Uber and a Lyft person. He had both. But now we don't have either one? Really?
Nope, not at this time.
Entrepreneurs.
Because they're technically not able to operate, and that's what allows, this change allows them to operate within the city limits.
All right, hopefully we can get some.
Do they have to have signage on their vehicle, you know, that they are Uber officially, or?
Uber and Lyft gives them that.
Okay.
Right in their windshield.
Yeah, in their windshield, so you can know. And then it would be, they would only have to do one fee, even if they did both, because it's per vehicle. So if one person did Uber and Lyft, it would just be fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars is just a standard, or?
Yeah, that's what we charge taxicabs. So again, you, in the future, you could look at that and reduce, reduce that if you wanted to. But currently, we're just keeping it on par with taxi, and when we do fees, we can reevaluate.
Got you.
I'll make a motion to conduct the first consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash X X, amending Chapter four, Section four point five-two, taxicabs to allow the transportation networks, companies, Uber, Lyft, et cetera, to operate in our city.
Second.
Motion to second. Any other discussion?
One quick question. City Manager, okay, you know, we're now adopting Uber and Lyft and anything else coming down the pipe, these things that happen. That et cetera, will cover that? It doesn't have to come back to us?
I think you have a terminology.
Yeah, it's the transportation network companies. So any transportation network company that comes through.
Thank you.
Okay, good question. Anybody else?
Chris, you'll notify the council if we do get somebody, or they'll come in for the license?
They'll come in. I'll let you know.
Okay. So know if somebody asks, and we can pass it on.
I think after, you know, we can work with the chamber, but after the second consideration, we still have that thirty-day window after it's been published. But it probably will take them a couple of weeks to get through the Uber and Lyft process, or we'll probably just have people, hey, you can sign up now after the second consideration, if it passes, so we can at least get them through the process.
Journal gives it a little press over there.
There's already people interested in making this happen immediately.
Yep.
Yeah.
So...
And they have to be eighteen. So I think I read that in the...
Yeah, legal driver.
So maybe it is a good job for some summer kids, you know. All right, I'd entertain a motion on this topic.
Nope, I did that.
We already did it.
Oh, we did. Oh, all right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to four point nine, first consideration of the next ordinance about liquor licensing and regulation.
Counselors, this is just another quick update or cleanup, if you want to call it that. The liquor licenses require that the business owner have a resident agent that lives within the city limits, or that's the current requirement. Some of the business owners are having problems getting somebody who wants to be that resident agent that lives within the city limits, so we're just updating that resident. So we're just updating that resident agent to be within thirty miles of the city limits, which will agree or line up with some of the other ordinance changes and additions that have been made in other areas.
I entertain a motion on this.
I'll offer motion to first considerization of ordinance number twenty-three dash X X, amending chapter five, section five point zero three of the city code of the city of New Ulm relative to business regulation and liquor license requirements.
Second. Motion to second. Any other questions, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Moving on to item four, number four point ten, agreement with Minnesota Department of Revenue for collection of local sales and use tax.
Councilors, as you may know, the Department of Revenue is the one that administers or collects our local sales tax and then distributes that to us each month. They've been looking to streamline their process a little bit. Right now, they give us, they send us like an initial estimated payment within five days of a month after the taxes were collected, and then they clean that up like a month later, and we get the remaining. They're just going to lump sum that all. They're not going to do that initial estimated payment. They're going to send just that one final payment each month. So it's just going to be a different timing to the payments. And then with that, they're also updating the way they calculate the fees that they deduct from our payments as well. From what I could tell, the way the fees are calculated now are very hard to see because you need to know how many local sales taxes are being reported throughout the entire state in order to calculate that. Now it will just be a flat fee based on our sales that are reported. And from what I could tell, it looks like we'll save eighteen to twenty bucks a month in fees, so it works out well for us. But we just need to sign the agreement and get it back to them.
Motion, motion authorize the city manager and finance director to sign the updated agreement between the Minnesota Department of Revenue and the city of New Ulm for a collection of local sales and use tax.
Second.
Motion to second. Any other questions? Are any questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next, BMX camping.
Well, we've had this in the past, and I don't know that we've ever had an issue.
I've been down there because I have a nephew that comes here. Man, there's like five hundred people down in that little, in that two-block radius. It's just crazy, the number of people there. Oh, Cheryl, go ahead. And they all have so much fun, and it's just neat.
Yes, Cheryl Corman, Assistant Director. This is a request that comes before the commission each year. Somebody must have let it slip through the cracks, and it didn't get to the commission. And the request came in last week on Monday or Tuesday, and rather than trying to gather the commission together, we just send it to the council for ease.
And they must have, what, two hundred races over that weekend? It's just.
I don't know the number of races, but the request comes through every year. There's never been an issue.
No.
It works out well, so.
It's a great family event in our community and, yeah.
Being there, never any issues. Anything else, Cheryl?
No.
Offer the resolution to authorize overnight temporary camping not to concede five recreational fires in South German Park near Third South Street for the BMX Minnesota State Qualifier Racing Event on the nights of Friday, June ninth, Saturday, June tenth, and Sunday, June eleventh, 2023.
Second.
Motion to second. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. Nicole, please call roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
And Counselor Schultz?
Yes, motion passes. Item number four twelve, four point one two. Is this the sand? We're going to talk about sand. All right. Who's going to start? Who's starting this out?
I'll kind of start it off, and then, you know, if council has additional questions, I know Lindsay and Sandy are here and can answer. I think this, this request is unique, but I think it'll be a good event downtown. I did send Newbra a couple, a couple of questions, you know, that staff had, and they did answer. And you got a, each one of you got a copy of those, those answers. They've kind of alleviated most of the questions that I have. There are two that are, I would say, kind of outstanding still, and I know that they can answer them. One, you know, what happens if it rains? You know, what is that?
Can we just talk about the big picture first?
Yeah.
And those that are watching and don't know what we're talking about.
So big picture, they're downtown between First North and Center Street is looking at doing a sand volleyball tournament, and they would fill up the entire street with sand to conduct a tournament down there curb to curb. And they'd have bookends. You know, a lot of the questions that we had, you know, were based on, you know, we have a bunch of utilities down there, you know. Are those going to get covered up? Make sure no issues with that, you know, fire. You know, if there's a fire, can we get through some of that, you know, get through that sand to help with those events? You know, what does the cleanup look like, you know? Because again, in the letter that was sent, there wasn't really, didn't really have those answers. But again, they're going to have, Ground Zero is going to be there. They're going to cover up the manholes, the water valves, and the storm sewers to make sure sand doesn't get in there. The cleanup process, again, for Ground Zero, you know, you should know that sand was ever there. They're going to kind of move that sand, sweep it up, street sweepers and the likes. City will be named additional insured, you know, because again, sand to curb, there is going to be that unevenness. So again, on city standpoint, I think they've pretty much covered a lot of that stuff. Again, rain is one question, and then the other thing that I'd like to bring up is they're looking at closing it Friday at noon to start laying that sand. But the autism school is there, and they're open till four thirty, and they just need their passengers to, you know, or their kids, you know. So at least have them work with it to figure something out if it is something where they can have the kids, you know, walk them out to Center Street or behind through the reverse entrance or, you know, start doing half, you know, and then finish that. So those are just kind of two of the other things that, you know, kind of remain on my, on my, on my doctive questions. But everything else, I think they've suffice, and I think it'll be great for downtown.
So this is Newbra that wants to put this on, and they mentioned that this is a fundraiser. So after I've looked at this, I'm like, a fundraiser for? Who can speak to that? Give your name and your address for the record, please.
Lindsay Hen, nine eighteen Seventeenth Street South.
Sandy Renke, eleven twelve Seventeenth Street South in New Ulm. Yes, this is a fundraiser for Newbra, and it's building funds to help us do the advertising and to all of the other pieces that we do for Newbra to try to bring businesses, people into town and do the advertising and.
So your revenue will come from advertising and from the people that want to play volleyball, right?
Yeah, our revenue will come from beyond what the cost of putting on the event is. The registrations, we'll also be doing T-shirts. The guy who's doing the T-shirts for us are making them to order so that we're not buying a thousand and only selling five hundred or whatever. So that is wonderful. And then we are planning on doing a nice plastic mug. The bars that are participating would be extending their liquor licenses out to the street. That would also include their liability insurance too. But instead of having plastic cups everywhere, people buy a mug, it's reusable, something they're going to want to hang on to. They use that. They go in, maybe they're getting a dollar off their pop, water, beer, whatever they're choosing to drink. So between the mugs, selling shirts, registrations, we do have a, at least half of the cost covered right now by business sponsorships. So it's likely we will be able to pick up the other half of that cost, I would think, through additional sponsorships.
I think we are at about six thousand out of eighty-five hundred right now.
Yep.
So we're close.
And right now, the home show is Newbra's biggest fundraiser. That having not been in place last few years because of COVID has really put Newbra in a tough spot. So we were able to bring that back this year, but we really need one more big event each year that can really bring in money. And Newbra's goal is to bring people to town, support businesses, promote, advertise, all of the things that keep both our local economy and our tourists happy, so.
Right. We've also worked with Sue Body, who's very involved in the sand volleyball and volleyball overall in New Ulm. And there's a very large sand volleyball tournament that took place somewhere in our southern Minnesota, and it's no longer happening. So they're looking for another opportunity to come somewhere. And she says these teams go all summer, and they just find a new place to go all the time. And they, they spend all summer traveling, so they want to come to New Ulm, so there's a really good buzz. She believes we won't have any trouble bringing in maybe fifty teams to start. It could build up to eighty. They do believe they can get it done in one day. They'd be divisioned, so some of those big, really skilled ones will be competing against each other down to a youth division. Some pickup teams, I think there's a class reunion in town that year, I'm sorry, that weekend. And they've already asked if they could put a team in for kind of a pickup team division. So a lot of buzz on it. They've been talking about it for a couple of years, so we appreciate your consideration.
Well, and I was kind of considering, or I was thinking about, wow, this could be kind of fun with bars, challenging bars, and ice cream store challenging, inspire.
The sand castle building contest was something Minnesota Ice wanted to put on. It's our own little spin. I think a lot of people in town feel we're a little heavier on the drinking festivals. This is something we really, and while there will be people drinking, of course, we really want to promote this as a family-friendly event. And that's where bringing in things like youth teams, a little youth tournament, sand castles, things like that are going to make this more of a family event and not just. And, and when Sandy talks about the, the following of volleyball teams that travel for these tournaments, they're a serious group of people that are there to play volleyball, and they're playing competitively. So I think all around, it's a really well-rounded event. Obviously, the biggest mental hurdle to cross is the sand, having that much sand in our downtown. And while we aren't, you know, professional earth movers or excavators, we have, that's where we have Ground Zero in place to really make sure that these, the things that Chris brought up are covered, that we're providing a safe event, a fun event, a money-making event, because that's what it is essentially meant for too. And I'll just say on behalf of myself and, and Newbra, you've got a really dedicated group of people that are here to make sure that it's successful. And, and not a lot of failure-minded people in this group. So when we say you can come downtown Sunday evening, and it won't look that much different than April after a winter of sand being dropped, we will really deliver on that and make sure that happens.
How many courts can they have in that one-block area?
Yeah, that mapping was done, and they, they believe that four courts, yes, and it will be, there will be balls event, you know, like hopefully, not too many, but some will be going into the sidewalks. So there won't be bleachers, but there will be people sitting on lawn chairs. But there'll be people around that are very involved in volleyball themselves that will help with all of that and the retrieval and things like that, so.
And we really haven't talked a little bit about the business owners themselves and their response to this. Can you talk a little bit about that?
So one of the benefits of the location of this event is that the majority of people backing the event are also on that block. So we definitely have that sixty percent in terms of, are you okay with there being no parking downtown these days? The majority of people already know about the tentative idea of, of a sand volleyball tournament being downtown and are on board. So I would say if there are any, is, if there is any opposition, it would be one or two people. And that hasn't even been put out on the table yet. We've gotten nothing but positive responses so far. But that's something we're willing to do, a written signatures petition or whatever is required to make sure that everyone's in the know about what's going on. And with the autism center, we kind of figure worst-case scenario, we can't drop sand until pickup is completed that day. But we already have a call into them and are, are more than happy to work with them on making sure that they can accommodate their students first and foremost, so.
And Chamber did talk to a couple of the businesses that had some inkling on it, but hadn't really given us their approval. And they today were excited and ready for it. So I think we're probably closer to nearly a hundred percent. Yeah.
Questions from the council?
How does the city attorney feel about this? Does he say any, you know, Robert Scott, if he's got any concerns or things that he should let us know about?
Mr. Scott, are you there?
I am here. Thank you, chair members of the council.
Any concerns on your end?
No, I mean, I think I've read the information in the council packet. The right-of-way use application appears to be in order. And my concern would be, is there liability insurance in place? And I don't know if that's, I believe that's a standard part of the city's right-of-way permit application process. So my assumption would be yes, but that would be my, I guess, the one concern I would raise for the council's consideration.
And Newbra will provide additional liability insurance, naming the city as additionally insured. And if I can say one thing, Sarah Wormka, Chamber of Commerce, so the city's insurance agency is Tom First Agency, First Miley. And so we've already talked to him, and he's comfortable moving forward.
I know the city manager had given us a list of, he said all of those questions were answered.
Yep.
Just the one for, not to put you on the spot, city engineer, any concern with stormwater runoff?
I'm sure, Vice Chair, city councilors, in the event of a rain event during this event when the sand's down, that, that would be my only concern is sand leaving the site. So if you can work with Ground Zero to ensure that they have perimeter control in place, bio-rolls and things of that nature.
They do have that.
Yep.
They've already committed to that. I think they called them something about erosion barriers or something to that effect.
Yep, yep, that. And then along with, I believe, baskets would be in the catch basins. So that, Mr. Vice Chair, my, my main concerns, I think, are addressed. Hopefully, it's a nice sunshiny weekend. We don't have to worry about any rain.
The one thing we can't control is the rain, and we've already discussed if there's an eighty percent chance of downpour rain for the weekend. People that are sponsoring this and those of us that'll be working on it have realized that it just won't take place, and we won't put the sand down, and it will just have to be another idea for another time. Hopefully, that won't happen. If it starts raining out of nowhere, we'll have to deal with that as that time comes. And hopefully, it's just a quick shower, and we can go back on it, or we'll have a mud pit.
Yeah.
But with that, I would have no concerns, being that they're going to be covering manholes with, and Watergate valves and all those things that infrastructure won't be damaged. So I would be okay with this moving forward.
Other comments?
Any comment maybe from the police chief on enforcement, or you have any concerns at all?
Mr. Vice Chair, members of the council, Dave Borker, Chief of Police for the city of New Ulm. I've, early on, I had talked with some of the planners, and I've discussed it with, with our staff. I, I have no issues at all. I think we're, you know, we'll know the hours that they're operating. We'll have, just with the schedule, we'll be able to get additional officers working at those times. And I, I think it'll be a fun event, and it's something that's very easily managed by our department.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I think you guys have done a tremendous amount of work getting all of these questions answered. I mean, all the planning you've put into this already before even coming to us. I mean, it's, it's remarkable. You just, you had an idea, and it's the work you've done to get this put together in the way you have is outstanding. And I think it's a creative, awesome way to bring hundreds of people, hundreds of new people. Like you said, it's, it's not a, an Oktoberfest. It's not a Bavarian blast. It's a very different idea. And I think it's, it's an awesome idea, and I, yeah, just praying for sunshine and beautiful weather.
This is very unique, so we will be the first in Minnesota to ever do this. And even in the area around, the states around us haven't done it. This has been done out east a little bit. But this is pretty unique, and people are excited, so.
If it can be a success, maybe it can be an annual thing, just something different in the summertime.
Yeah.
I was thinking the same thing, very obviously.
An event every weekend.
Event.
And that would be the goal. The goal would be to make it an annual event, so.
You'll hit some bumps, and then you'll figure that out, just like any festival or any event like this. But I want to compliment you too. When I first read this, I went, you're going to bring four hundred and seventy tons of sand into downtown New Ulm? Are you kidding me? And then as I read through it, and then I really liked the questions that were sent by the city staff, and then very thorough response, and just like slammed them down, like, yep, this is what we're doing, this is what we're doing. So thank you for your homework and your dedication on that. I also think this is going to be kind of fun and unique and different. And it's in August. Like you said, there's not a lot going on that month, so you picked a good month. You're not going to be competing with other events. And so, yeah, I, I think this is great. Mayor, you got anything on this topic?
I just want you to know that I am a volleyball player, so if you need anybody, just let me know. At least I was in. just let me know. Or at least I was in.
I think we found our first, our first spiker. We have a very passionate team, like Lindsay was saying. So I feel fortunate to be on this group, but there are people that have been talking about this for a couple of years that are tournament organizers. And of course, some of our people downtown that are just always looking for bringing something new into town to bring people in. So I feel fortunate to be involved, but we'll make sure that they know that you appreciate the efforts that we put in for this.
Please do that. Please pass on our, our best of luck to your entire group.
Absolutely. We appreciate your support.
After we entertain a motion to take care of this.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve the request to the New Ulm Area Chamber of Commerce on behalf of the New Ulm Business and Retail Association to temporarily close Minnesota Street between Center and First North Street from Friday, August fourth, 2023, at twelve PM to Sunday, August sixth, 2023, at three PM for a sand volleyball tournament fundraiser.
Second.
Motion second. Any last comments, questions?
Won't we need a resolution at some point to approve the street closure? Isn't that usually a resolution?
No, because it's less than fourteen days.
Okay.
We'll be okay. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to item number four point one three. Offer a resolution for the local performance measurement survey.
Before you, we have the local performance measurement survey redoing it or doing it again for 2020, 2024, essentially getting those results for twenty-three. We, when we had the results, we talked about potentially not moving forward because we get the same answers every single year and maybe doing it, you know, every five years to see how we're doing at that point. So, you know, I'm fine if you want to do it again this year and then start not doing it after that. We can go that route or if you just want to not do it this year. I'm fine with that as well. But I think doing it every five years, I think it's going to be a better of how well we're doing. And we'll have larger data to do that. The only thing is if we don't do it, if there ever is a levy limit set by the state, we would be subject to that levy, that levy limit. So when we do the performance measurement survey, it exempts us from that. But the last one was two thousand?
Yeah, two, what, two thousand eight or nine or a long time ago before since they had a levy limit.
And when we first started it, and then I know we added more residents.
Yep.
Five years ago or something.
Yeah.
The only thing I, it does do is it does allow the citizens of New Ulm to put some comments, you know, what, how do they feel about the city? And it is different voices every, so that's probably the best benefit of it. Somebody's like, doggone, the streets are really in good shape. Or they love the fire department, of course, so. But they, they can, it's like they have a little bit of a voice, an option to talk. That, that's the part that I, I agree with you. They're almost always pretty much the same. We have pretty much the same scores. But we don't have that piece where people can feel they can talk. So I don't know that. I could go either way on this.
The state does cover the cost of doing.
Yeah. You know, and I look at it, the way we're doing community engagement now with going really out, you know, Joe's done a really good job doing the streets and things like that through Zoom. You know, part of that community engagement strategy, we are able to get those feedback, you know, throughout the year instead of, oh, here once a year you get to do this. We're able to start pulling those, those things in. You know, again, we'll be having a, a work-study session soon on snow removal, you know, and no mome and that kind of stuff where the public actually can come. Well, just a last kind of like, hey, no mome and we'll, we'll get through that. But again, it's the.
Let's not talk about no mome.
Not right now. But again, you know, we are doing community outreach much different than we've done it in the past and getting more community feedback, you know. And, and that's something I feel we, we do a very good job of now as we move forward, you know, starting with, with the comprehensive plan, moving into the city strategic plan and some of that other stuff. But again, I'm, if you want to continue, I'm absolutely fine with that.
That's just my thoughts on it. I'm not super strong on.
One question, does the state of Minnesota reimburse you if you bounce in and out of the program?
I would assume they do.
I mean, if you waited three years, okay, let's get reimbursed again.
In my head too.
Yeah.
We were going to bounce it ahead.
I'm just throwing it out there.
This year and just let people know that this might be something that we're going to do every three years or every five years or whatever we would decide upon. So people know, get your input out. Maybe there'll be more, more respondents if they know it's every three years.
Their way with it, you know, in regards. But I think with all the technology, you know, and they can email city staff if they've got questions, concerns. They email all the council members, you know, if they've got something. And we email staff and ask for a, a response, you know, to a question. And we've got an open door policy like Chris always says, and we get back to everybody. So I'm, I'm fine with it either way.
Want to hear about the city, just go on Facebook.
All right. What would you like to do, folks?
I'll offer the resolution approving further implementation of the local performance measure survey for 2022 services developed by the city council and local results in innovation to its citizenry by December thirty-first, 2023 by reporting results on the city's website.
Your recommendation then is to continue?
I would continue it one more year. Let people know that this is something that we're going to probably prolong.
Got it.
Second.
We got motion second. Any other thoughts? This is a resolution. So Nicole, will you please call the roll?
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Wormka?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes. Motion passes. Item four point one four, temporary outdoor patio application for Lakeson First. So we can have a number three on the patio, right?
Yes. So this was, this is the one of two temporary outdoor patios that we'll be approving, potentially approving tonight. This will be for Lakeson First. They will roughly be taking about a space and a half in front of, in front of their, their location. They will be extending their liquor license to said patio.
I entertain a motion on this?
I'll offer a motion to approve the temporary outdoor patio application for Lakeson First, five twelve First North Street for the use of public right-of-way for the installation of temporary outdoor patio from June fifteenth, 2023, October first, 2023, and offer the resolution to extend their liquor license to the temporary outdoor patio area as defined in the diagram with the conditions outlined in the application.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to four point fifteen.
Resolution as part of that as well because they're extending their liquor license.
Oh, resol.
Yep.
It is, it is a resolution?
It's. Liquor license is a resolution portion. Yes.
All right. Nicole, will you please call roll?
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Wormka?
Yes.
And Councillor Schultz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item four fifty point one five, same thing for Sweet Haven Tonics.
Any comments from the manager or?
Nope. This one, this one will be slightly different because it'll actually follow the parklet because it'll take two spots and extend out where that is more, where Lakeson First was more parallel parking. So that's why they only got a technically a space and a half.
All right. Any other kind of motion?
All for the motion to approve the temporary outdoor patio application for Sweet Haven Tonics, one one six North Minnesota Street for use of public right-of-way for the installation of a temporary outdoor patio from June nineteenth, twenty-three to October thirty-first, twenty-three, and offer the resolution to extend their liquor license into the temporary outdoor patio area as defined in the diagram with conditions outlined in the application.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? Oh, this is a resolution. So Nicole, will you please call the roll?
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Wormka?
Yes.
And Councillor Schultz?
Yes. Motion carries. Last one on the, in the fours, four point one six, fire department donation.
Resolution to accept five hundred dollar donation from Dan and Lisa Schneider. Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Resolution.
Oh, resolution. I even have the big R there.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Wormka?
Yes.
And Councillor Schultz?
Yes. Motion passes. Last item for this part, the claims and estimates.
Make a motion to accept the list of claims paid in the amount of one million, nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and one dollars and eighty-three cents.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions on any items? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will adjourn at this point and move ourselves into a work-study session.